Good afternoon. My name is Jason Chavez and I'm the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to call to order a regular committee meeting for Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members, staff, and the public that these meetings are broadcast live to enable greater public participation. These broadcasts include real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Payne.
Present.
Wonsley.
Present.
Rainville is absent.
Vito.
Present.
Ellison is absent.
Osman.
Present.
Cashman is absent.
Jenkins.
Present.
Chikteh.
Present.
Koski is absent.
Pomassano.
Present.
Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Present.
And Chair Chavez.
Present.
There are nine members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Today, we will begin with the reports of standing committees before we take up our agenda. We'll first begin with the Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee chaired by Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward nineteen items. The first is a gift acceptance from the Big Cities Health Coalition of Registration, Lodging, Incendials, Airfare, Meals, and Transportation for Demone Chaplin. Two is a gift acceptance from the Wisconsin Environmental Health Association of Registration and Lodging for Cindy Wetworth. Three is a gift acceptance from Eden Hall Exhibitions for 911 Directors Forum for Travel, Lodging, and Meals for Joni Hahn and Letitia Cardenas. Four is a gift acceptance from the Share Use Mobility Center of Registration, Travel, Meals, and Lodging Expenses for Max Gonzalez. Five is an MPFA grant for the Department of Public Works Water Distribution Facility. Six is a bid for Combined Sewer Overflows 001 and 117 Storm Sewer Improvement Project. Seven is contracts with various community partners for senior services and senior community navigator services. Eight is a contract amendment with Geographic Software Specialists, Inc. for Engineering Data Integration and Automation Services. Nine is a contract amendment with Vinco, Inc. for Catch Basin and Maintenance Hole Repairs. Ten is a contract amendment with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for upgrading helmets, cameras for the Police Department. Eleven is a contract amendment with Granicus, Inc. for Subscription-Based Document Hosting Services. Twelve is a contract amendment with Meyer Contracting, Inc. for the Second Street North Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Thirteen is a contract amendment with Michael's Trenchless, Inc. for the Large-Diameter Sewer Cure-and-Place Pipelining 2024 Project. Fourteen is contract amendments with multiple organizations for the 2025 Group Violence Intervention Services. Fifteen is a contract amendment with multiple organizations for the 2025 Youth Group Violence Intervention Services. Sixteen is a lease agreement with Sabathony Community Center for Environmental Training Space at 31038 Street East. Seventeen is tort claims procedures updates. Eighteen is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Bevan Blueheart. Nineteen is contracts with multiple law firms for workers' compensation legal services for a total budgeted amount not to exceed $2.4 million. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to look if anybody is on cue. With that, the next committee is the Budget Committee chaired by Vice President Chuck Dye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Budget Committee is bringing forward one item for consideration, which is adopting findings and approving the establishment and salary schedule for an appointed position in the City Clerk's Office of Director Legislative Research and Oversight. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Next up is the Business Housing and Zoning Committee chaired by Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. The Business Housing and Zoning Committee will be bringing seven items to the council. Item one is approving a bond on University Gateway Corporation. Item two is denying an appeal submitted by Mali Prechert regarding the seven-point residential development. Item three is approving five liquor license renewals. Item four is approving three liquor license gambling license. Item five is accepting a grant from Sabaru Loves Pets Program for pet adoption fees. Item six is accepting a grant from Minnesota State Historical Preservation Office for costs related to the NA PC Conference next July. And lastly, item seven is approving rezoning application to Quari Developers for Property at 1501 Johnson Street Northeast. With that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Climate Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Climate Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward three items. Item one is passage of a resolution adopting and levying assessments for sidewalk repair and construction. Item two is approving the appointment of Nate Boone to the Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And item three is approving a legislative directive related to franchise fees and climate action. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. And lastly, we have the Public Health and Safety Committee with the Vice Chair, Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward three items. The first item is a passage of ordinance related to fees for the use of city-owned resources. Number two is authorizing a grant acceptance from the Minnesota Department of Health for a public health emergency preparedness activity and appropriating funds to the Health Department. Three is authorizing a joint powers agreement with the State of Minnesota for hazardous materials response and appropriating funds to the Fire Department. And then with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. And no one else is on cue. With that, I believe we do have an amendment to the agenda, so I'll first pass it to Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution that is before you and the RCA that's before you to the end of our business today. And I will ask for a formal second to my motion.
Second.
There has been moved and seconded. And I want to see if colleagues have any questions or want to save that for the debate at the end.
Mr. Chair, apologies for interruption, but maybe just for those watching at home, maybe it would be a good idea for the author to just very briefly summarize what it is.
Thanks, Ken. Vice Chair Chowdhury.
Thank you. Yes, happy to do so. It is a resolution supporting the reallocation of $117,000, just about, of community trauma response services to be equitably distributed to current contractors who are continuing to provide services through August 31st. So contracts that have already been granted for community trauma response services, hoping to take this item after item number two in our discussion. Depending on the result of that, it'll inform the vote and context on the resolution here for the members of the body.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? And that is going to be a part of our agenda. With that, we have one item on our content agenda, and it is related to our council standing committees and its membership. The item is a resolution revising memberships and quorums of various committees and directing the clerk to update rules pursuant to these amendments. With that, I'll first pass it to Councilmember Pomassano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No one spoke with me about this. So am I understanding it correctly that Councilmember Ellison will no longer be serving on any council committees?
And I can give our clerk, Carl, to answer those questions. Thanks for those questions, Councilmember Pomassano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Casey Carl, I have the privilege of serving as the city clerk. Through the chair, I'll say it's my understanding that Councilmember Ellison is disposed with an opportunity. He is pursuing that, requires his presence away from the city, and therefore the resolution that's been prepared would remove his participation as a member of standing committees, but that he retains his formal responsibility as a member of city council and will be attending the meetings of full council and voting as a member of the council.
Thank you for that answer. As you know, committees are the workhorses of our city council. I'm pleased to hear he will be expected at council meetings. But I have reservations about this and can't support it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Council President Payton.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Actually, I was jumping in queue to share what Clerk Carl shared, but I'll also just remind folks at the end of the term, last year, we had a council member not running for reelection. And towards the end of that term, as his career took on a new trajectory, he kind of had a similar arrangement. So this is just a technical amendment to help us manage quorum on our committees with that absence.
Next up, we have Councilmember Vito.
My turn. Thank you. First, I don't remember that happening in this way. I know who we're talking about here, but I don't remember, like, five months. What month are we in? Whatever. Like, I don't remember that happened. And secondly, biz and public safety are extremely important committees to the North Side. Without Councilmember Ellison sitting on those committees, we have zero North Minneapolis representation on those committees. That's not acceptable to the only other North Side council member up here. It's just not fair. Here we go. Another moment to disenfranchise the North Side. We can't be, like, it's not okay to just take, I get it, he's got other obligations, but to not even consider that there's no one on the North Side representing the two most important committees on this council is just absurd. I'm not understanding who made this decision and how without even talking to the North Side council members. I mean, like, how do I go back to my community and say to them, matters and biz, I mean, at least with Councilmember Ellison here, I get to say, this was a decision he made, but we're, like, there's no representation whatsoever on the two largest committees I see, the two that are super important to North Minneapolis. Like, not, like, who, whose idea is this? Like, who came up with this as an alternative? And why wasn't I consulted? What, like, why aren't we talking about this? Why didn't we have an opportunity to even consider something different than what's before us today? I mean, again, this council constantly talks about how North Minneapolis is disenfranchised, all the people of color, all the things that we're used to being treated like it's happening from this very council that says they're here to protect that. I'm extremely disappointed in this decision, and I hope that my colleagues don't allow this to happen, something to happen to North Minneapolis that is not good for them just once again.
Councilmember Osman.
Thank you so much. As the biz chair, biz, as we know, is a very, very busy committee. We get, you know, hundreds of items every few cycles. And Councilmember Ellison played a huge role as vice chair. He was really someone who has been on biz for a long, long time, and he will be missed. But the work has to go on. And we need, to keep the quorum, being a busy, we need someone who can actually take his place. So I'm not sure if Casey Carl is able to talk about this, but it's unfortunate, you know, Councilmember Ellison has served our city for a long time. We're super thankful for that. But as a biz chair, it's very important to have a full members during the meeting.
Through the chair, I'll maybe take a stab at answering or addressing what I think was a comment about committee size. And I'll start by saying, although committee sizes of council have traditionally been six members per committee, other than those that have thirteen members, that's not a formula that's required anywhere. It's just been what has been. Council President mentioned that in the previous term, there was a member, Councilmember Johnson, who left in part earlier before his term ended to pursue a new opportunity in his private career. That's true. And in a similar way, at that time, there was an opportunity for us to move forward. In the end, what happened is we shuffled members around in order to cover a vacancy. That required a lot of extra work. When this came up, I pointed out to the council president, there are literally seven cycles left, seven council meetings. And so there's nothing magical about having six. If we leave it at five, the quorum reduces to three. And that, that goes forward. At any rate, all decisions have to be forwarded to the city council for the council's vote. Councilmember Ellison will be on the dais at council, and it's his obligation to prepare and review the committee reports and recommendations in advance of that. And understand that he would do that. The, the easy way is to simply remove him from the committee he sits on now, allow the quorum to be reduced by one, and move forward with the members who are already well-versed in the business of those committees as they continue to go forward through the remainder of this term. So that was my recommendation to the council. We talked about that at council leadership, and that resulted in the resolution that's before you. Certainly, if the body wishes to take the time to fill those, I think, three seats on three different committees or two that Councilmember Ellison holds on public health and safety and on the biz, housing and inspections, that, that is the body's decision to make.
Thank you so much. As the biz chair, I would love to have someone take Councilmember Ellison's position. I understand how the quorum works, and thank you for that explanation. But it will be super, super important to have someone in that committee. And if there is an opportunity for the council leadership or as a council body to nominate someone, I'm ready for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I too is not informed of this ahead of time. I guess that I don't, my opinion doesn't matter, but I'm going to give it anyway. And so first of all, we need to tell the truth. When Councilmember Johnson left, there was an election, and the new council member was sworn in early. So the residents of that ward had representation very quickly. Right now, the residents of Ward Five will not have representation on these two committees. And that's just not right. You're hurting the residents of Ward Five. I can't vote for this. In the past, what the council has done is appoint someone in that temporary spot to serve that, that council member position. And I think that's what leadership should be addressing today, not the fact that they're going to just jam this down our throats.
Councilmember Vito.
I, I'm not okay with us choosing easy over equitable. And that's what I feel like the clerk just said to us. The easy thing to do was this way. For me, a North Side representative, the equitable thing to do is figure out a solution where the North Side is represented. This is not okay. Colleagues, this ain't it. We can do better than this. We deserve representation on these committees. I sit on AO, and I'm fine with that. Like, that I'm representing North Side on AO. But these other two committees, that is not okay. And no decision should have been made in this way without thinking about that. We cannot be left behind like this. And council leadership, shame on you for not talking to Northsiders about this and fixing this before this decision was put before our faces today.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to move to forward this without recommendation to council so that we could have a conversation with Councilmember Ellison actually here because I personally have not been able to speak to him about this either.
I'll second that.
Council Vice Chair of the Committee of the Whole, Chowdhury.
Yeah, I, I'll just note, like, the only conversation that I've had was, would you be interested in taking the vice chair position because you've been on planning commission and you're on the committee? And I'm like, yep, like, that works for me. I saw this on agenda setting and then before this committee. And I think, like, I'm glad we're talking about it in committee, which means it's not said and done. I'm definitely open to having the conversations for us to figure out what's right. And so that's why I'm seconding this forwarding without recommendation. It gives us all some opportunities to talk to one another. And I think we just all have to be willing to lean in and proactively reach out and figure out what we want to do. Because it is three committee spots. And for, also for whoever is to take it, if what we're looking at is appointing new council members to each committee, it's going to be additional work. And that is a consideration that everyone individually and collectively we need to make. So I just wanted to share my thoughts on that. Like, I'm happy to be a part of us kind of thinking through what our structure looks like and what's best for us to get our work done in these last seven cycles. Also keeping in mind, we're going to have probably a very, very intense budget, budget season too. So we're all just going to be spending a lot of time at City Hall, it sounds like.
Council President Payton.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Yeah, as the clerk said, we, we had a very brief consultation on this, and I pretty much followed the recommendation of the clerk, but I'm very much receptive to this conversation and happy to afford this without recommendation. I'd even entertain holding this for a cycle so that we could have further in-depth conversations and not have it be rushed.
I agree. Councilmember Vito.
That's where I was going to. Tomorrow, whatever, what's today? Tuesday. One day is not going to be helpful, so we need to hold this over a cycle, please.
Can the clerks help us understand how to make a motion after Councilmember Cashman just made one? Councilmember Cashman, if you would, if you would recommend, if you would...
I'm fine with amending my motion to delay the cycle.
Great. And Council President Payton is to move to the next Committee of the Whole Meeting, which was seated by Councilmember Vito.
Could we get a date on when the next Committee of the Whole Meeting is?
Oh, right, because we have a...
Because we have a ward week.
September 9th is the date of the next Committee of the Whole Meeting.
All right, so it's being delayed to the next September 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting. All right, if there is a further discussion, oh, we have Councilmember Rainville. And then, oh, are we good? Can we, are we good to take a vote? All those in favor on the motion to postpone this item until the next Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is September 9th, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? And that motion has been approved. All right, colleagues, the next item will pass to Council President Payton, which is the Police Accountability Ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. And I might even phone a friend with the city attorney here. But by way of background, I opened this at the beginning of the term with the specific intention of strengthening the ordinance in alignment with some changes at the state legislature. We learned through a lot of that legislative work that there were certain constraints within our charter that would prevent us from strengthening this ordinance in that alignment. However, there were a number of sessions I held in the community, conversations I held with the chair and the vice chair of the CCPO, conversations I've had with other commissioners, conversations I've had with the Civil Rights Department, conversations with the city attorney, that has led to the collection of amendments that are before you. The original amendments are underlined. After we brought this forward one cycle, we got some feedback from council members that were, are reflected in the yellow highlighted amendment. And then, as you recall, we held this one more cycle based on some feedback that we got from our outgoing civil rights director, as well as some outstanding community suggestions. And those are reflected in green. The specifics that I will highlight, for instance, are in section 172 dot 30 slash seven C? Just C? Okay. As an example, the federal consent decree put requirements on the chief to notify in writing within thirty days to the CCPO why they diverged from a discipline recommendation, but in consultation with the city attorney. That started to butt up against limitations within the charter. This language is reflected to at least capture that need to report out that there may have been a diversion from what the panel had recommended, as an example. Another substantive one here, and this is largely in consultation with our Civil Rights Department, is the reduction of the panel from five members to three members. And again, one of the underlying amendments that was originally brought forward was the expansion of the CCPO to include a number of seats specifically for panelists so that we could work through that backlog. This is also helping us work through that backlog by making it more logistically practical to bring a panel together by making this change. And this was by recommendation of our Civil Rights Department. And the rest of these amendments should be familiar from the last couple cycles. But I don't know if Madam City Attorney, was there anything that you would add that I missed?
Council President, no, I think that you covered the, the new things that are of note.
Okay. So what I learned through this exercise is that for us to really strengthen civilian oversight in the city of Minneapolis, there are certain constraints that we are bound to within the charter that are somewhat of a barrier to being able to fully implement stronger civilian oversight within the police department. And so if you recall, several weeks back, a number of council members signed on to a letter, and this is shortly after the Trump administration withdrew the consent decree, where we were trying to articulate that for us to really, truly implement reform in the city of Minneapolis, it's going to require a whole-city approach. And that whole-city approach is going to require collaboration with city council and the mayor. We are moving forward with that meeting. I have a meeting scheduled with the mayor, and I'm grateful for that collaboration and with the city attorney so that we can really start articulating, what can we codify by city ordinance? And then what types of amendments would we want to consider for the charter to really strengthen our accountability framework for the city? I think that we need to be unbounded by the charter as we pursue durable police reform in the city of Minneapolis. And so that is work to come. This amendment before you was my best effort at strengthening our civilian oversight within the existing constraints of the charter. Going further is going to really require us doing some deeper work on city charter and even going to the state Capitol and lobbying as needed as we think about a holistic accountability framework as it relates to police. So that is my little intro to what is before you.
Next up, we have Councilmember Cashman on cue.
Thank you, Chair Chavez. Ward seven has a new CCPO commissioner, Chris Baker, who's recently joined and has had a lot of conversations with me about the way that the CCPO, the way it's constructed is a little misleading to the public because it doesn't have the authority that it proclaims to have. And a lot of what's happening in their meetings is not really, they don't have the tools to address, like the public comments that they receive, they don't have the tools to address. And I had asked if we could reopen the public hearing to hear from him, which I was too late on, so I'm just going to read his public comment because I think it's instructive for us. So I'm Chris Baker, CCPO Commissioner. My comments are from the perspective of a new member, and I have a few observations. The actual authority of the CCPO is very narrow, much narrower than the title implies in the public perception. We review policies, we sit on discipline panels, and we may contribute to the police chief's performance review. We start each meeting with public comments. Nearly all are areas outside of our authority, and we have been advised by staff that we are not allowed to tell them we do not have the authority to address their comment. Examples include precinct staffing levels, selection of use-of-force trainers, and the June 3rd federal raid. The community wants accountability. They want to be able to state their concerns in person, not just by email. And instead, we let them make comments to the body that does not have the authority to provide accountability or oversight. Our role in policy review is merely advisory. The police department is not even required to respond to our public comments, though in practice, they do respond to ours. In my professional life, I'm on a standards-writing committee, and we have to respond to every comment we receive on how we've incorporated it or why we cannot. It seems like MPD should be required to similarly respond to public comments. Lastly, at our last meeting, we were informed that we could not seek public input in the performance review of the police chief and that our contribution would be limited to private individual interviews by Community Safety Commissioner Barnett. If we are the body charged with public engagement and police oversight but are barred from seeking that, what are we doing? In Minneapolis, we do not have community oversight over the police. The police chief and MPD at large answer only to the mayor. It is misleading for us to have a body called Community Commission on Police Oversight. If we want civilian oversight, we need a civilian police accountability commission with real authority over policy budgets and staffing. So I'm not sure that I agree with everything he's written here, but I at least wanted to share his comments for us. to share his comments for us, because I think I'm struggling to understand how the CCPO is able to truly weigh in on some of these issues. And so in particular, I would like to ask about the chief's performance review, and the process for the review of the police chief, what's the role of the CCPO in that, and I would ask either President Payne or City Attorney Anderson could answer that for us.
So you, these comments hit the nail on the head. So essentially, no matter what we put in ordinance, the sole authority of holding the chief accountable lies with the mayor, and that is by charter. So nothing that we can do within the ordinance will ever change that. The CCPO can contribute comments, those comments are worth whatever the mayor considers them worth, because it's the mayor's sole authority to make those determinations. So as an example, the city of Oakland recently amended their charter to allow their civilian review authority to fire the chief, and to do findings of fact, so that they're, they have to do it with just cause, but they, with a number of commissioner votes, finding of just cause, they can fire the chief. That's an authority that was enshrined within their city charter. They're 20 years into a federal consent decree, and they're just now learning that they need to enable their civilian oversight body the ability for termination. These are the types of things that we are constrained by under the current language of our city charter, and the real work that we have ahead of us is amending that city charter to put in the types of accountability mechanisms that allow for that true oversight and accountability. And that means oversight and accountability of the police department, not just to the city council, but to the public, right? So right now, the only way to get that accountability is through the mayor, and the only way the public can influence that is through their vote for mayor. So if we want something more than that, we're going to have to amend our charter, and I'm starting that process and those conversations with the city attorney, and frankly, with the mayor.
Okay, thank you, President Payne, for outlining that. Another question I had was whether the CCPO gets informed of MPD policy changes, or have the opportunity to weigh in on them.
Councilmember Cashman, so I, I believe that the, so they do have the ability to weigh in on policy. In fact, in the ordinance, I think it's explicitly stated. They have a policy review subcommittee that meets together to look at the policies, particularly the new ones that are being proposed through the settlement agreement process. So they do give comment delivered, you know, by the body on those policies. I believe that they are getting feedback from MPD about what's being changed and what's not being changed. I don't know that they're getting that directly as the body, or I know MPD is generally communicating publicly, you know, they don't, they get feedback not just from the CCPO, but from the community at large, and are, you know, siphoning through all of those comments and having a really good sort of track list of what's been accepted and what's not been accepted, and I believe that that's publicly published.
Okay, got it. President Payne? Yep.
Yeah, I would just add on to that, that I believe the settlement agreement requires that public process, and so whatever policy changes that they propose are supposed to go to their public website for public comment and review. Obviously, CCPO are members of the public and could just as well submit comment for a public, a public comment. My hope would be that formally providing that by way of the authority vested via this ordinance, that MPD would take that comment as even more seriously than the public, but the general nature of the settlement agreement is such that MPD has to publicize their proposed amendments, receive comment before they implement them.
Okay, and then the next question I had was about these review panels and having sworn officers serve on them, because I see that's one of the changes that you've provided here, is the ratio and the amount of people on the review panels. And I was wondering if there are other ways to integrate the professional perspective of sworn officers without directly including sworn officers on the review panel, especially given staffing challenges that we're having, and the potential for retaliation that might occur from someone in the department serving on this, on this review panel.
So Councilmember Cashman, so the, essentially, the ratio, since, since this ordinance was adopted, so post the PCOC, but, you know, once we've actually had the CCPO, there has always been a ratio of more civilians to, to law enforcement officers. So the way that this amendment that's before you right now, again, because as Council President stated, to avoid the backlog and kind of get these review panels moving, the ratio has now been, it's a three-person body with one sworn officer and two civilians. So we always had the situation where the civilian voice, you know, in terms of numbers, outweighs the number of law enforcement officers, and that's sort of been, you know, even when we were in negotiations with MDHR, kind of that, you know, more civilians with that ratio to law enforcement, but still having a law enforcement presence, again, because of that professional, you know, experience and expertise on, on policing, you know, having that voice on the review panel was important, but always being outnumbered by the, the civilians.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if that professional expertise can come from members of the Office of Community Safety, for example, who are professionals who work but are not sworn officers, that we all want, you know, out-solving crimes and responding to crimes?
So the, the, the composition of the review panel, it's lieutenants and higher, so it's, it's not, you know, beat cops who are out on the street, it's, it's higher-level ranking folks that are part of that pool.
And has, has there been any discussion of having other professionals in the Office of Community Safety serve on the panels instead of sworn officers?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Last question I'll ask is about the alternative members who are being added to service civilian reviewers, and this may be a question for the clerk, about the process to recruit these civilian members to serve in the panels, and when that will happen? Will it happen within our ABC recruitment timeline, or be expedited, so that we can begin that work after the passage of this ordinance?
Through the chair, Councilmember Cashman, good question. The ordinance requires the use of the open appointments process, and so, once passed by council on its final form, the clerk's office would open up a recruitment period for those additional seats, and then merge that into the regular appointment cycle after the initial set of appointments are made. So there'd be an initial recruitment process to fill those new seats, as it were, the alternative seats, and then thereafter, they would be phased into the normal recruitment period, using the open appointments process.
Thank you. And will these civilians also be paid for their time on the panels?
I haven't seen the final draft, but I'm assuming, because the ordinance currently says members are paid for any of their official functions, which would include meetings, trainings, and service on review panels, and the attorney can speak to more specifics.
Attorney?
Yes, council members, yes, there is a payment for sitting on review panels, and I, I believe that the edits, or the amendments that we made to this version is per case. Some of these cases are very, very large in volume, and you, it may be that you get to more than one case in one, you know, sitting of a review panel, but it takes a lot of time to get through that, the whole case file. So rather than $50 per review panel session, it's now $50 per case.
Okay, understood.
Which was a change to what the city attorney just said, in case that wasn't clear. The original ordinance said there was a payment made for review panel, and so one review panel could have done four or five different cases, and that was seen as an issue of fairness for members who were processing greater loads. And so I think the revised ordinance says it's per case and not per review panel.
Got it, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, I'm going to support this ordinance, and thank you all for the work that you've done on it. I just wanted to just really emphasize what I'm hearing from Chris and from others, that the CCPO doesn't really have the authority that it seems like it does, and that we should be more transparent about that, and work to find more ways to actually provide oversight through this body as a city council, or through the CCPO as we move forward.
Council President Payne, would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance as amended.
And seeing that there are no questions or comments on the motion to approve this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion carries. Now, colleagues, I'm going to ask us to take a recess. We're having issues with captioning, and hopefully, that can be resolved in three or five minutes, but I'm not, should I give a specific time, or just recess until the call of the chair? I'll recess until the call of the chair. Without objection.